It got so quiet.
Okay. Now, for reals, we're ready to get started. Today is Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. This is the city council's regular meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order and giving notice that at this meeting, the city council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can I have roll call?
Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Asland?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Matthews, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pleasure. If you can stand, please do so.
Councilmember House, would you read the mission statement?
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the city of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Councilmember McCarthy, would you read the land acknowledgement?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right, we're moving down to open call to the public, and this is where the public can address us on an item that is not on the agenda. It occurs twice on the agenda, at the beginning and at the end. And you have three minutes to speak, and there's a timer that you should be able to see here. The council does not respond or ask questions, although we may ask staff to follow up with you. So, let's go. First is Sean Armour.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and Council, good afternoon. I'm Sean Armour, IT manager for the city of Flagstaff, also acting IT director while CJ Perry is out this week. Today is IT Professionals Day, and I wanted to seize this opportunity to recognize the IT professionals that we have here in the city of Flagstaff and within our community partners. Often, the work that we do in IT is behind the scenes, and we don't get a lot of public recognition. But the work that we do is so crucial to Team Flagstaff in the safety and -- thank you.
Thank you. Hunter Hebert?
Good afternoon, Council. My name's Hunter Abear. I am here representing the Downtown Flagstaff Business Alliance. I'm the new executive director. I started a couple of months ago, so I'm starting to recognize a few faces in this room and here on the council, and I just wanted to say thank you guys for your service, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Samuel Beckett? Yeah, Samuel.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'll be subbing in for Samuel. My name is Sam Beckett. No, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and acknowledge a really cool project happening here in the city. As many of you may have saw today, we are in the process of our road repair, street safety program. We're about halfway through it, and today was a really, really great benchmark for us as we got Aspen Avenue paved. Really, really cool milestone as we worked through the project, and a great day to get a cool photo opportunity with some historical locations downtown. As you can see, the project went really, really well, quite smoothly. I think, as Jarrett would say, our project manager, you know, we're just trying to pave the way for success for everyone else with this project. So, pretty excited about the work that happened out there. Just note, it's not quite over. We'll be coming back, doing a little bit of utility patch work, bringing the manhole covers back up to the road level surface, which I know none of us really want, but it really helps our utility friends, and Shannon Jones told me I had to. So, just, yeah, thank you all for your constant support and help in communicating this project out to the public. It's gone really, really well, really great partnerships. I want to thank Flagstaff Police Department for helping us out today with some traffic control with their civilian aides. Again, just really excited about the project. Wanted to give a quick progress report, and thank you all for your continued support.
Thank you. Dennis Givens?
Thank you, Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor, city council staff, citizens. Happy U.S. Constitution Day. The Constitution is my guide, and I will never abandon it. I just wanted to invite everyone to come to Morning Glory Cafe. If you work for the city, we'll give you 10% off. And also, if you spend your money in town, money goes back to the government, so it's a double whammy. So, come on in. And eating more vegetables is good for the environment. It's also good for your soul and your body and your health, and it's also good for the environment. And also, we shouldn't force people to do things as the government, but as citizens, we should do the right thing. Thank you for your day, and let's go us. Peace.
Thank you. All right, moving down to council liaison reports. Let's start down here with Councilmember Matthews.
I don't have anything today. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
I attended the Parks and Recs meeting yesterday. I think it was yesterday, Monday, yeah. And found out more about taking ice off the ice rink than I ever thought I wanted to know. It's a very interesting process. But anyway, that was all it is, and now I'm happy to be back from break, and so I can attend more meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor? Nothing. Councilmember McCarthy?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Sweet?
There's a water commission meeting happening Thursday, 4:00 in this room.
Councilmember House?
Nothing for me this week, thank you.
All right, that was quick. Moving down, item number six, appointments. So, first appointments are Parks and Rec Commission. There's one spot for a term expiring August 2026, and two spots for terms expiring August 2027. Get to this next page. And there are three of us making recommendations. The first is Councilmember Harris.
Parks and Recs is first, right? The Parks and Recs?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure. We had some good candidates, and always a pleasure to read their applications. And I would like to appoint Neil Frazier for a term ending August 2027.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. For a term expiring in August of 2027, I nominate Jill Christensen. There's two 27s according to the agenda, yeah.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I will nominate Josh Stackhouse for a term expiring August 2027. I mean, 2026.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving down to B, Housing Commission. And we have two appointments here. First up is Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to appoint Davanna McLaughlin to the Low Income Housing Expert position with a term expiring September 2027.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Sorry, I'm going back and forth here. Councilmember House, did you have the -- Okay, Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Karen Flores for the Real Estate Professional seat to expire September 2027.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving down to C, Beautification and Public Art. There's one appointment for a term expiring June 2028. We have a lot of applicants for this one. Vice Mayor Asland?
Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Audra Travelby to the term expiring June 28.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Any opposed? All right, moving down to D, Airport Commission. We have Councilmember Harris and then Vice Mayor Asland.
And Mayor, can you remind me of the term again for the airport?
Yes, both of them are for terms expiring October 2027.
Okay, thank you. I would like to appoint Robert Carpenter for the term ending October 27.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vice Mayor?
I will nominate Andrew Strauss for the remaining appointment.
I'll second.
Expiring October 2027.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Any opposed? All right, we're moving down to liquor license, public hearings. And we have two. So, why don't you present both, and then I can take a -- unless a council member wants to decide these separately, then we'll take one motion for both of them.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could we actually open the public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was just about to do that.
Mayor, could we do the discussion together, but then vote separately on the two?
Yes, we --
Thank you.
Yes, we can. All right, at this time, I'm opening the public hearing, and we'll have the staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Nick Almandares, Sergeant with the Flagstaff Police Department, before you today to present a new liquor license application. First one is for a Series 12 restaurant liquor license at Golden Dragon, located at 2730 East Lakin Drive here in Flagstaff, Arizona. This application was filed by Yizheng De Fang, who is the agent, Young Xiao, controlling person, Jia Lin, controlling person, and Jun Sheng, premise manager. In my investigation, I discovered no derogatory records on the applicants and no current or historical liquor violations on the business. I found evidence that the applicants had taken the mandatory liquor license training, and a representative was invited to answer any questions you may have. Second is for a Series 3 in-state microbrewery liquor license at Wanderlust Brewing Company. This is located at 1519 North Main Street here in Flagstaff, Arizona. This application was filed by Nathan Phillips, who is the agent and controlling person, and David Phillips, the controlling person. In my investigation, I discovered no derogatory records on the applicants, and there was a liquor violation on the business. Did find evidence the applicants have taken the mandatory liquor license training, and a representative was also invited to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Matthews?
I just have a clarification question. On the Series 12 restaurant, Golden Dragon had a beer and wine before, correct? Is that correct? Like, what's the difference is what I'm getting at?
So, the Series 12 is specific to a restaurant, and it's just a different series license. I can look up the differences if you'd like.
I mean, is it -- there's different -- is hard alcohol versus just beer and wine, or?
The restaurant requires a certain portion of sales associated with food and alcohol.
Got it, okay, thank you.
It doesn't look like we have any public comment.
Mayor, we do not.
All right. So, Council, I will entertain a motion on item A. Oh.
Need to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I was just about to do that. But before we do that, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll get public hearings one of these days. And I will entertain a motion on item A.
Mayor, I move that we forward the application to the state with a recommendation for approval for the Golden Dragon license.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, item B.
Some discussion first. I noticed that in the packet, it says that they have a concept plan which needs to be submitted, which has not been submitted, and a building application that has not been submitted. So, I'm just wondering if staff has any comment on that. I guess one way we could approach this is that we could recommend this for approval contingent on them completing the necessary approvals of the city. Looks like Michelle has some comments.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Michelle McNulty, the Planning Director. Correct, they do need to come in for a concept plan for a change of use. However, the building separate can be separate than the liquor license. They have come in to have a pre-application meeting and are working towards bringing the site into conformance. Reggie may be online to answer any questions about the building permit, but planning is comfortable with the recommendation to move forward with the license, with the efforts that they've put forward.
Okay, and that they won't be able to operate until they get the planning documents in line anyway, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I'm willing to go with that understanding, willing to go forward with this. Shall I make the motion? Mayor, I move that we forward the application for Wanderlust Brewing Company to the state with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving down to consent agenda. We have items A and B. And did I understand -- did you -- Councilmember Harris, which one did you want to pull?
Item A.
Item A, okay. Since there are only two items, I guess we might -- No, we still have to approve the second one because we're -- Okay, can I get a motion on item 8B?
Mayor, I'll move that we approve the consent item 8B.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's go back and discuss item 8A.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to have a little bit more detail about the loan and what's hap -- where does the money -- What do we do with the money that we get back, the interest? There's a whole bunch of questions. Who's here from housing, somebody? Oh, there you are, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor. Christine Pavlik, Housing and Grants Administrator, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but I'll just give you a little summary. So, these funds were from the ARPA allocation, and they were directed to housing assistance programs. And now, we've allocated them out, and they come back to the city as program income. However, when they come back to the city, they will need to be reallocated by a future council. And I believe Stacy BK is in attendance, and she would be able to answer if that can happen ahead of time or not. But my understanding is that it would need to be reallocated. It would not come directly into a housing programs fund. To give a little more background on the loan, it's going to be for 30 years. There's no interest on this loan, and it is due back after 30 years. Other than that, it's pretty standard. They're required to maintain affordability for that entire time. They've waived their right to what's called a qualified contract, and so they have to continue with the Lytech program throughout the state's requirements. So, they are using Lytech tax credits through the Arizona Department of Housing, and so they have to comply with all of the rules of that program as well.
And can you tell me what the -- what they need the funds for? Did they come to us after they had -- And things increased, or the price of things? What -- so, why? Why do they need the loan?
Yeah, so, they had responded to our Notice of Funding Availability. We had put out this Notice of Funding Availability. It was $1.9 million in funds, and they were ranked, all of the applications were ranked. And we had said that developers could apply, for-profit developers could apply, except for it would be a loan instead of a grant. So, all of the nonprofits that applied received grants. Those funds are not going to come back to the city, but because of the for-profit development, we have to do a long-term grant program to do instead of the committee. This project has seen a lot of increasing costs. They wrote a lot about that in their application. It's been a while since I've read it, but they did talk a lot about increasing costs and the need for gap financing due to COVID-related impacts. And that's what these funds were for, they were COVID recovery funds. I know that they've also asked for incentive funds. They've come to the city a few times. This was through an application, so this wasn't outside of an application ask. This was, they applied just like everybody else, and their application was ranked just like everybody else's.
Okay, and is -- in terms of them paying back the loan or us spending the money, so what's that time? I thought the ARPA funds had to be spent by a certain time? So, is that not?
Yeah, so --
It has to be allocated?
Yeah, they have to be allocated by the end.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, they have to be allocated by the end of this year, and then spent by the end of the next year. They will draw these funds pretty quickly. They're supposed to be leasing these units by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Council, any additional questions or comments? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve item 8A.
I'll move to approve item 8A.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are moving right along. Down to routine items, 9A, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2024-21. Welcome.
Thanks, Mayor, Council, Sterling Solomon, city attorney. At the previous council meeting, I did a presentation on this, very brief, as far as the easement agreement with BNSF that's required by charter that would be done by ordinance. So, ordinance 2024-21 would be to approve that today with a second read, because you did the first read two weeks ago. Any questions?
Council, any questions? Looks like there is none. So, can I get a motion to read the ordinance by title for the final time?
Mayor, I move that we read ordinance number 2024-21 by title only for the final time.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? City Clerk?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff accepting and approving an easement agreement with BNSF, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt?
So, move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving down to item 9B, consideration and approval of contract, Change Order 3 with Hunter Contracting for the Inter Basin Waterline Restoration Project. Hello.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, David Peterson, project manager with Capital Improvement Engineering. I'm going to give a little update on the Inter Basin Waterline project and then ask for your favorable approval on the Change Order 3 at the end of the presentation. I am honored and humbled to be able to work with such a brilliant team on this project. It's just a remarkable group of people that have come from several organizations to make a nearly impossible project possible. So, I guess from this slide, I would just like to say a huge thanks to a lot of brilliant, wonderful people instead of reading them all by name. Hunter is joining us behind me, as well as a handful of city staff, Stacy BK and Brian Hudson, Earth Water Services. This project has had lots of twists and turns. As you can expect, building things in very bad places when it's raining. They've done a remarkable job keeping things going, as well as our partnership with the Forest Service as well, so. As I always keep the theme of when I come up here, I like to share exciting news with this project. There's always a lot of exciting things going on in this project. Through the end of this month, we'll have 65 sites repaired. Not all those sites are equal. Some of them are very small, some of them are very big. Some of them have built -- been built a couple of times in facets and parts. The project extent goes on for about 15 miles, over 2,000 vertical feet. At times, Hunter has had up to 50 staff working on four trues at four different locations concurrently. So, as I'll go over these numbers here on the right, it's just really impressive what you can accomplish with a lot of people, very talented and gifted people, very patient people. And then, also, the extensive construction will be complete at the end of this month. So, we have a lot of construction and tidy up and tie up and close out and things that we have to do next season, but the bulk of the material getting up there, the bulk of the big construction will be completed by the end of this month before our winter shuts us down, as it does every year as a snowpack builds up there. And I also wanted to touch on the incredible communication. This team, if you picture, we have a handful of subconsultants. We have geotechnical technicians up there. We have inspection services up there. Many of you have been on this road as part of our two tours we have done up there. It's a very narrow road. Coordinating who has right of way, coordinating when cars are coming and going is not an easy feat. So, I would just like to congratulate the consultants and the contractor and the subconsultants on making it look easy. As well as our project partners, we get together once a week, in a larger group once a month, and as needed, as well as issues come up. And then, also with our emergency management team, making sure that our contractor has radios that are tied in with our fire crews. They've been able to report some spot fires the last couple of seasons up there. They have cell phones, they have satellite phones. Thank God, they've never had to use those yet in an emergency. And then, briefly, I just wanted to go over some of these numbers here on the right. These numbers, I love looking at this number here. There's 60,000 man-hours for this project. So, a typical professional works 2,080 hours in a year. That's the equivalent of one person working 29 years. Absolutely mind-numbing as to how many hours, and this is just the contractor. So, we have a lot of hours on the backside of this number as well that aren't accounted for. We have the yards of concrete, the yards of AB, the yards of riprap, the yards of fill. These numbers are big numbers. They're not astronomical compared to some of the other projects that we do here in town. But I want to remind the council that these are hauled up in five-yard trucks. So, these numbers need to be divided by five to convey how many trips this material is going up on the mountain. Sometimes, you have a second piece of equipment pushing these trucks because the road's so steep. Last week, I saw a grader pushing a five-yard truck to get up the hill. And then, in addition to that, sometimes that material changes hands And then in addition to that, sometimes that material changes hands to two or three pieces of equipment before it gets to some of these sites. So just the ability and the out-of-the-box thinking on how to get this work done in very challenging locations, uh, is astronomical. And then gabion baskets, if you picture about the size of this diocese, it's kind of like a chain links box that's hand-packed with rock. Uh, if you take all of those gabion baskets and stack them side by side, it would be just over a mile in length that we have, uh, placed to date, uh, through the end of September. So again, just astronomical numbers, working on sites over 15 miles, uh, big congratulations to the team. I have five sites I want to share. Uh, on the left side, you'll see pre-construction, so these were taken just after the pipeline, summer and fall of '22. And then I, pictures that I took last week, I'm not calling them final because we have a lot of things we have to do on these sites to finish them out, reseed, uh, some of the specifications that the Forest Service lays out for us when we complete a project. Uh, so I'm just calling them fall of '24. Here on the left side, you can see the culvert that goes under Schultz Pass Road, and then our water line here on the left, that little black hole, is one of our three breaks that we knew before the project started. Uh, this is an incised channel that you'll see on the next slide a little better. This is a nater view, which is just simply straight overhead looking down. The next one, next pictures are oblique, so they're from the side and a little easier to see. You can see the forward crossing here, the concrete cap. You can see the culvert, well, you can't see the culvert, but the entrance is up here and the exit's down here. Uh, here on the left, you can see a coworker, uh, above that culvert, and this is Schultz Pass Road again, which is now open to the public, so you can drive up there and see these yourself. Uh, and then last week, uh, we have our Stacy BK here, standing on the, on the site as we were doing our punch list items for, before the closeout at this site. And then some of the riprap that actually made it through that culvert, uh, in some of the smaller storms we had the last couple of weeks. So completely functioning the way it's supposed to, uh, kudos to the designer. Site nine, this one's a little unique because as you can see on the left, the before picture actually has some infrastructure that was installed with the Schultz Fire repairs, so 2011, after the Schultz Fire of 2010. Uh, here on the south side, we had exposed water line as we did on the north side as well. Two-thirds of the road is gone. Uh, you can see that there's a lot of compromising situations here with the water line potentially having to break as well. But I will note that you'll see an eye here in a couple of slides, that by having pre-existing structure there, it helped reduce the head cutting and the damage and the incision of that canyon. So on the left, you can see we've extended, we tied into that previous infrastructure, expanded our gabion baskets. Uh, the gabion baskets again are that chain link top, but they have a concrete cap on them. That's why you see the almost wedding cake-looking feature here on the right. Uh, and then we have a deflection gabion baskets up here, so when the water comes down this channel, it's redirected over the crossing as well. One thing you'll see in these pictures, they're, within a month of being about the same timeframe of the year, you can see a lot of the Aspen regeneration and a lot of the vegetation coming back as it's supposed to, and it's wonderful to see. It helps also stabilize the watershed. Uh, site seven, uh, this one was really scary to look at in the drone when we were flying it in August of 2022. We didn't know where the road came into this thing and where the road exited this site on the picture on the left. You can see a lot of debris, you can see the existing gabion baskets and forward crossing. Here on the right, you can see that we again tied into that infrastructure, we widened that road prism. Uh, the city and the Forest Service utilizes this. This roadway was used when fighting the pipeline fire, so we wanted to make sure our crossings were wide enough, not only for city equipment, but also Forest Service equipment as well. Uh, this one had a large event on it, I think about two or three weeks ago, so you can see the debris sitting here on the side. We have actually damaged to our mattress pad down here, this should be all gray with concrete, uh, but those rocks and debris that came through crunched through that six-inch cap. Uh, and then you can't tell very well because this is an overhead shot, but this is actually debris that's been pushed up, that's about 12 feet tall, uh, just from doing exactly, again, what it was designed to do. It's not designed to completely pass material, you're going to end up with material on the road that needs to be cleared. But the victory here is that the roadway is intact, our water line is intact, the infrastructure is good. Hmm, this is the before picture of I. This is what I was saying when you don't have infrastructure from before, that you have an incised canyon. A handful of you were able to join us for that field tour, seeing this in person. This is me standing here on the left, just for scale, about a 30-foot ravine. This is our water line, this should be more or less level coming across this canyon, um, but it was broken in this location, water was leaking down this canyon. Uh, again, on the right, we have the same structure here, crossing, we were actually thinking initially that we would have to realign the road through the bottom of this image, um, but again, because of the brilliance of the team, they've been able to keep it in its existing condition. Uh, I think I shared this on the field trip as well, but one of the complexities of this project is that everything on the uphill side of this project is wilderness. So we can't go marching into the wilderness doing what we like with construction, uh, which adds a complexity of reducing how you can move things around and shift things around and install and actually do construction. And then lastly, I'm going to share site A, so this is our highest site on Waterline Road. Uh, this drains about 98% of Inter Basin, so just a little under three square miles. The pipeline burn shed does drain to this site as well as part of one of those micro watersheds. Uh, it's about half a mile away. So as we know, water travels downhill and carries everything with it in its way, uh, so that debris does make it down to this site. So again, we made the crossing, this gentleman on the left is standing about here in this picture on the right. Uh, we armored that channel with riprap, there's actually two culverts going under this road because of the excessive drainage, draining all of, well, nearly all of Inter Basin. Uh, and then this crossing has 10, 10-degree wings on the side, so it helps to channelize the water, uh, over the crossing instead of dissipating it out over the site. And then briefly, we've had four GMPs for the work that's been done to date. If you remember, we've had one contract for inspection services, that's something that we typically do in-house with capital projects, but we didn't have the capacity to have a full-time inspector up there, uh, nearly every day. It takes, as you can imagine, six to eight hours just to get up there, inspect multiple sites, especially when you have four sites going at the same time, and then coordinating your geotechnical inspections. Uh, there's a lot to do and we just didn't have the capacity. So thank you for approving that contract. Uh, we will be back again in probably January, February to do GMP 5, which will be the closeout one. We'll be working with our colleagues to be able to scope what we need to include in that GMP to make sure that everything's finalized, cleaned up, and put it back the way that we like to see projects wrapped up. And then just going over previous change orders, change order one was for, uh, a weather event, I'll go over here in the next slide, but it came down, uh, it flooded debris, we had about two or three feet of deposition here on the roadway on the left. You can see the high watermark on this building. You can imagine the water and the sedimentation, the trees, uh, coming down during this event, but it also left us with this, this floating, uh, magic carpet relic, uh, which is concerning because the wellhead is actually cast into that slab. So if that shifted, it could have compromised our well. So we were able to repair that as well as encase the water line just upstream from here with that change order. Uh, change order two has been described by some of our colleagues as a career highlight, which is a wonderful thing to be a part of. Uh, the Arizona Elk Society made a donation, uh, via or through the Arizona Game and Fish to be able to re-establish, uh, five drinkers that existed before the pipeline fire. Uh, what they do is there's a tap and then a saddle, and then a, a water line that goes off of our water line to a locking valve. They're going to come in with additional funding and a contractor later on to install a cistern and then picture a bathtub just below that that has a floater like your toilet does to call for water that fills up so that they, wildlife up there has water to drink during the dry time of the year, which also coincides with a lot of our snow melt, water melt-off. So we have water in there to be able to share, to, to help with these wildlife drinkers. So that's absolutely wonderful facet to be able to share that, and thank you for your work with that one as well. All right, under the unexciting news, when you have unexpected events like we did last September, uh, we had nearly four inches of rain in about 40 minutes in the upper watershed. So this is Humphreys Peak in this image, this reds are the heaviest rainfall. Uh, a lot of it fell in the northwestern part of Inter Basin. Uh, that water fell up in our catchments and traveled downstream. Some of that debris actually made it all the way to the 418 on the north side of the peaks, which is probably four to five miles away. Uh, so it was a very large event, very devastating. We didn't really know the extent of that damage until we got up there probably four or five days later because we were busy working at that I site with the big canyon, which was also impacted, but not nearly to the degree that the Inter Basin was. So you've seen the picture on the left, the picture on the right, again, just showing the high water line on that event from the wellhouse, completely packed with debris. This is where the engine is housed for the well. And then this is back at site A, we had actually poured the culverts, but we hadn't done the crossing work yet, but you can see the debris that was carried down from the heart of that event. This is probably a mile and a half from where that rainfall fell. And then by the fine work that was done this summer, clearing our access roads up to our spring catchment, we made it up to the Flagstaff Spring Complex. Uh, so if you have your index finger and your middle finger, you can kind of figure out that they have, there's a surface catchment on your middle finger and then the index finger points up to a catchment that's actually buried underground. So this picture on the left is going to be your middle finger coming into the catchment, and you can see here are these little gray-orange pieces of pipe. Uh, those are all supposed to be connected and they're all supposed to be underground. Uh, so pieces of this pipe, we actually found a mile and a half down this drainage, um, from being shattered and dissipated in that big event as well. Um, this picture on the bottom right, these two pipes are supposed to join together, so that's kind of the, the vertex of where your fingers meet below. Uh, this is simply just draining water that three sticks of pipe are collecting, so it's not obviously making it up to the catchment as you can see in the left image. Uh, the right image here is the pointer finger, that's going up to the catchment that's underground. It had a lot of water coming into it, but only some of it was making into, into the pipe. Uh, so again, the water line is a critical part of this, but obviously if our catchments aren't catching the water, we're missing out on a lot of spring water as well as snow melt-off. So the scope of change order three is asking for some of the road access work to be able to get up to these sites, the channel repair and alignment. We're going to be installing 330 feet of ductile iron pipe, so it's a much more robust pipe than the clay pipe that was there. Uh, and then armoring of the existing pipe, so coming down your index finger downward about 50 or 60 feet, uh, there's exposed pipe down there that's just ripe to be destroyed again in an event, so we need to rebury that and armor it so this doesn't happen again. Uh, and then the cost is about $189,000, and we are asking for no additional time because GMP four covers us with our time constraint, and then we'll also have a little bit of time added in GMP five. And then before I conclude, I did want to thank you for being able to, for those that were able to join us on our field tours, thank you. And I also wanted to mention those that have RSVP'd for our celebration on October 4th up at the North Filtration Plant, uh, where we will have a handful of project partners and, uh, elected members as well to come celebrate the success of this project. We'll have some equipment up there, we'll have a gabion basket. I was joking that we could have a packing contest where everybody can grab some riprap and pack the gabions as fast, but, uh, we'll just have those on display so you can see firsthand what it's like for those that weren't able to make the tour. Uh, and with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions or comments that the counsel might have.
Thank you. Counselmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation and especially for the information upfront on the number of hours and, and the amount of labor that's gone into this. Um, I just wanted to comment on that because I'm hoping that there's also opportunities for that information to be shared a bit more broadly. Um, I know we no longer have Counselmember Shimonie here, so I guess I'll be the one to say it would make a really great video, um, to be able to share just how much work went into that. I think it's, it, it is truly very, very impactful and particularly of importance to our community, so I would love to see that shared out, um, so that people really see that.
If I can just comment on that, Stacy Breckinaggs, Emergency Management Director. Um, we are intending, um, back when we, this first happened, we received a state award and a national award, and we're intending to put that in again, um, for a state award and a national award. Um, so I think that video suggestion will be great, um, to have along with a narrative article, so we'll try to do both. So thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Yeah, and Counselmember House, I think we're going to try to put together some posters at the event. I know that doesn't speak as much to the public, but we can make those public, publicly available as well. So I know that we have a project website that I have not done a well, good job maintaining, but I've been maintaining the work up there, so that's good. Um, but we'll try to disseminate that information because it is a wonderful story to share. Thank you.
Counselmember Sweet.
Thank you. I, I did do the recent fourth, and, um, just thank you again for everything that you've done for the community on this.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Is that a comment? You know, I, I hear that there's somebody in your department that is really good at drone videos.
I know a guy.
I know you know a guy. Amazing work, thank you so much. I can't wait for the celebration in October and, uh, Counselmember Harris and I were on the first tour when things were just getting going and it was, it was amazing. So I can't wait to show the world what you guys have done. Definitely deserves an award.
Thank you, Counselmember Matthews.
Your drone footage might win an award too.
It's, Mayor, it's not an easy place to fly, and there's days you can't fly and there's days that you probably shouldn't fly, uh, but thankfully there's not a whole lot of air, air traffic up there.
This isn't a technical question, but it takes six to eight hours to get up there? Is that what I heard you say?
Uh, Counselmember Harris, yes, in, in some cases the remote sites, by the time you've transferred the material through three different pieces of equipment, in some places they have to back in on that narrow road, yeah, that's not out, out of the realm by the time you leave town in the morning.
Okay, so then, do they stay up there at night?
Counselmember, no, they do not. They, they return back to the places they're staying. It's just round trip, uh, by the time, and again, there's 50 people, so it takes about, depending on where you're leaving from in town, it can take about an hour, hour and a half to get up there. Um, but to coordinate all the equipment pieces coming and going, that can take even longer. In fact, some of the times, and many of the times, we actually have to add retardant and a layer to the concrete so it doesn't harden before it gets to the site.
So now, I, as Counselmember Matthews says, we were on the same trip together and we rode up in cars and, I mean, the, most of the time going up the, the mountain, I was, had my eyes closed and so, but I'm wondering, are people coming down at night? I would never, ever try and figure that out. I, I, I'm just curious, that it's not, it's not a criticism or anything, I'm just naturally curious.
Not at all. Counselmember Harris, no, all the work is done during daylight hours, at least on our part. The road is open to recreationalists, so yeah, there can be bikers and hikers, uh, which there have been, which we escort through the site. Uh, some are more friendly than others, uh, even when the road is missing and we're telling them that the road is missing. Um, yeah, but our contractor's been very patient, but yeah, we don't work at night. It's, we, safety is number one, and in order to maintain that level of safety, we can't work at night, and we don't work in bad weather. Uh, we have protocols for how we operate and when we operate.
All right, no additional questions or comments? Thank you very much. And, um, I am looking for a motion to approve change order three and authorize a city manager to execute.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving down to the regular agenda, 10A, consideration and adoption of resolution number 2024-36. Hello, Mr. Intz.
Hello, Mayor Deget. Um, councilmembers, uh, I'm Martin Intz with the Engineering Division. Uh, this is a resolution that will authorize an IGA between the city and Metro Plan, uh, for management of a Safe Routes to School Grant. Uh, the IGA establishes roles and responsibilities for management of the grant. That includes, uh, grant oversight, uh, project management, and, uh, financial management for that grant for each of the two agencies. Uh, this is a grant that was awarded to Metro Plan a couple of months ago. Uh, it's a Safe Routes to School Grant. It's, uh, was given through the, uh, Transportation Alternatives Program, which is federal funding through the Surface Transportation Act that's managed statewide by the Arizona Department of Transportation. Uh, their grant includes three different components. Uh, first is a Safe Routes to School Program. Uh, this is a part that will be managed by Metro Plan. Um, it's funding for them to hire program staff to conduct various Safe Routes activities as part of their ongoing mission. Uh, the second component is for a feasibility study for a left turn from Pine Cliff onto Cedar on McMillan Mesa. Uh, this facilitates better transit access generally to the Mesa, but to the, some of the schools on top of the Mesa as well, and allows Met, uh, Mountain Line to make the deviation the permanent route, um, if you're familiar with how bus service works in that area. Uh, the third component is the part to be managed by the city. Uh, this will include concept planning, uh, for pet and bike accommodation around various schools. Uh, we are focusing our efforts for concept planning in the Sunnyside area and some of the schools in that, in that neighborhood, including, uh, Killip, Puente, MEMS, and Pine Forest. And we're looking in more detail at where we're missing, uh, sidewalks, crossings, bikeways, and footstrails to better accommodate, uh, kids walking and biking. So think of some of the busy streets in that area like Cedar and Fourth and Sixth, and what we might do for better pet and bike accommodation, both along those streets and across those streets. So again, it's worth mentioning that our component, that last component that the city will manage, is for concept planning and some preliminary engineering. Construction will come later and is subject to funding, so we're just doing the preliminary part of this. Our part of the grant, the city's part, is about $500,000. We are responsible for a local match of 5.7%, which ends up being about $28,000. And we have that amount budgeted in our current budget under concept planning. So that's all I have to say about this IGA, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? You've done such a great job of leading us along this project that there are no questions.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
I would like to move that we read Resolution Number 2024-36 by title only.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between Metro Plan and the City of Flagstaff for project management of the Transportation Alternatives Safe Routes to School grant award.
And another motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2024-36.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That carries. Next up, we have consideration of proposed amendment to Observatory Mesa Right-of-Way easement, item number 10B.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay, good evening. I'm Robert Wallace, the Open Space Supervisor for the city, and I'm here tonight also with Kevin Vinsel, Deputy City Attorney. And I'm here to follow up on the request to amend the right-of-way easement for the construction of an access road from Hidden Hollow Road through the city's Observatory Mesa natural area. We were here last in front of council on this topic on June 26th, at which time we provided the council with an informational update. And we are here this evening to provide you with a brief reminder on this topic and to get an indication from council on whether or not the council would support this amendment to this right-of-way. The council's decision will then be forwarded to the State of Arizona's Parks and Trails Board and the State Historic Preservation Office. These entities would then need to review and determine the direction on this request as a next step in the process before the request could go through the city's formal development process. Just a quick reminder on the location here. The location is within the boundaries of City of Flagstaff. It's the light green area that you can see there that was protected in 2016, the Observatory Mesa natural area. And we're speaking about Section Six here, the northernmost section that connects up to Hidden Hollow. And the specific location is that yellow line that you see coming through the natural area that would access the parcels there on the east side there, the red parcels there. This item is a request by private property owners to amend the current right-of-way, which would modify the existing easement to allow for the construction of a 20-foot wide road, an access road to provide better access to the private property so they can be developed. This right-of-way originated in 1986, the yellow line there. It was purchased from the Arizona State Land Department for the development of a public roadway. It has not been developed fully into a public roadway. It remains a primitive dirt road that is about 10 to 15 feet wide, and it provides legal access to these series of parcels, seven parcels with six different property owners. The original right-of-way easement is still valid and does provide access and perpetuity through the natural area. However, there are some, thanks. However, there are some complications, as you'll see in these next slides here. The current two-track trail does not align in entirety with the current easement. To develop the private properties, the road must meet city fire access road design criteria, which requires modifying the road as far as width, slope, and turning radius. And then according to the information shared with the city by the engineer consultant, the construction of the road within the boundaries of the existing easement would be very difficult due to the topography constraints. So you can kind of see that in the photos here. So this is the very first part of the road leading away from Hidden Hollow. This is the section of the road that has some steep terrain. And then these photographs are kind of nearing the property boundary there. So city staff have met with private property owners on multiple occasions, and they've provided recommendations to arrive at the current concept that's being shared with you tonight to help reduce the impact to the natural area, and those changes are reflected in this plan. So just a brief reminder on changes of land use for this particular area following the following right-of-way. Since the initial right-of-way, excuse me, the purpose of the property did change when the city purchased the property from the state of Arizona and using voter-approved funds and a grant awarded from the Arizona State Parks, and is now protected as a natural area. The grant agreement did give a deed of conservation easement to protect and preserve the natural area. And though the city does own the property now, the deed of conservation easement does govern the uses permitted on the property, and it restricts impacts to the natural area outside of the right-of-way easement boundaries, thus the reason for the state parks and the historic office involvement in the next steps. So because this is a multi-jurisdictional approval process, the Arizona State Parks and Trails has asked the City of Flagstaff to review the request and indicate whether or not the council would support amending the right-of-way easement. So following tonight's council meeting, the council's preferred direction will be forwarded to the state and the State Historic Preservation Office for consideration in their review process and their decision process. Following the state's review, the proposal for amending the right-of-way and the construction plans would then need to go through the city's formal process. Here's a brief reminder of the deed of conservation language. The language of the conservation easement outlines the parameters for managing the natural area. The deed dictates the types of improvements that are allowed in the natural area and protects the baseline documentation of the conditions of the property when it was purchased. And it also restricts the amount of development permitted to a total of 20 acres, and that includes things like trails, parking areas, signs, or improvements to this right-of-way that fall outside the current easement. Some considerations that this amendment have included. The legal description for the current right-of-way encompasses 3.52 acres. The proposed revised right-of-way alignment for the 20-foot access road would encompass 2.7 acres. However, an additional 1.05 acres would be impacted by construction, which could be rehabilitated by the private property owners and is included in the conditions of the amended easement. So for example, this includes the slope cuts and fills that would be placed on city property permanently. One benefit of amending the right-of-way would be that some of the current right-of-way would be placed on private property, reducing the overall acreage on the natural area. So if you look at the map here, this kind of parallel line that parallels those private properties would be put over the border, just in the natural, or in the private properties. Another consideration that might be problematic for wildlife is that approximately 48 acres are located east of the current right-of-way, and that this road could isolate that from the larger property. And if the road is well-traveled, that could impact wildlife use of that particular acreage.
Pardon me, we have a question from Councilmember McCarthy.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at this map that's on the screen right now. There's the part that starts at the left, which is the north, and it progresses along, and then it goes east and then south along the properties. And that's basically existing right-of-way and then minor changes to the right-of-way to make the road practical to build. What is that other, to the bottom, lower right of the slide, which is to the west? There's another blue line there. What is that?
You know, I'd have to take a look at the key for this concept, but I think that there is another, like, old road up there that might be plotted on it.
And there was some discussion in the packet about fire engine routes and things. Would the fire engines go on that, the predominant lines, the thicker lines on your drawing?
Yeah, the access that we're discussing tonight is just the outline in this kind of light, light blue here. So the green is the current easement, and you can see the current road doesn't quite follow that. And then it comes up and parallels the property. So we're not, we're not discussing, this is not included actually in that concept proposal.
So nothing's changing on that road? You're not adding or subtracting?
This particular alignment?
Yes, that line right there.
No. Kevin, did you have anything else to add for that? Okay. So we did work with the Open Space Commission to discuss the amendment, and they developed the recommendation, they did develop a recommendation for city council's consideration. They did work really hard to think this request through. Overall, they were concerned that a well-used access road traveling through the natural area would affect the property, and some of their concerns and considerations are included on this slide. Of course, they want to respect the legal rights outlined in the existing easement, ensuring the deed of conservation easement isn't violated in any way. There was also concern that the road overall was not a benefit to the natural area or recreation for the public, and they did have some concerns that there would be impacts possibly to the Hidden Hollow residents. And impacts on the property during construction and having adequate restoration of the property following the construction of an alignment. So overall, the commission did put a lot of thought and feel that a lot of public comment on this topic. In this discussion, they worked really hard to find the middle ground that would impact the natural area the least while not imposing undue hardships on the private property owners. They did ask for private property owners to provide their input and provided the opportunity to comment on the conditions that they drafted, thus forming the following recommendations Overall, the Open Space Commission made the following recommendation, to recommend that the request to amend the right-of-way easement, number 16-88092, be considered by the city council, subject to the conditions in the current right-of-way easement and the following conditions. We reviewed the conditions last time. I'm happy to go over those again for you if you'd like, but I'll go ahead and just keep moving through. So this reclamation was really belabored in the effort to find a fair solution in hopes that these conditions will be carried forward by council as well. The next steps for this, tonight, we're looking for council direction, after which the information will be forwarded to the state and then likely could come back to the council. Anything you want to add on the next steps, Kevin? Okay, great. And then the options for consideration, make no changes to the existing easement, so that is like, keep the current easement the way it is, or recommend amending the easement with the conditions provided by the Open Space Commission, or recommend amending the easement with council-determined conditions. And I'll open it up for your discussion.
Questions? Comments? Councilmember House?
Just a quick question, and it may be a silly one, so forgive me if it is, but does this have any bearings on or relationship to the overall greater Observatory Mesa Trail Plan, or is it completely separate?
This road is currently a public access, and so residents of Hidden Hollow could walk up that road legally to gain access to the natural area currently as it lies. This particular road is not included in the trail plan draft in any way, except that it's marked on the map as a potential pedestrian access, or, excuse me, pedestrian, like, walking area.
Vice Mayor, are you, are you the liaison to the Open Space Commission? Who's the, Councilmember Harris? Do you have anything to add from their discussion?
This was really a tough one, and I think I, for one, was conflicted. From the discussion that I remembered from the group and, let's see, here, here. I don't think that anything would be satisfactory to the commission other than not doing it, and that's not an option. And I don't know what else to say, you know, because the whole idea is that, you know, people are really committed to the open space, and I'm hoping, hoping that we don't find ourselves in this position again, because we bought the land, I believe, after the people, the private property people, is that correct, city manager? Did we buy it after them? Who, who was that? Yeah. Yeah. And so I'm hoping that we don't find ourselves in this position that, that we have to make this decision again, you know? So I don't have anything else to add, and open space, rec, parks and recs are here, so do you all want to add anything that I might not? No? No? Okay.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. And I know we just had this discussion or a similar discussion on this property a couple months ago, but currently, the private property owners, is this their only access to their property, this road going up there? So now they're wanting it realigned and...
Sorry, yeah, the answer to that question is yes, this is their only access.
Mayor, I think one of the owners or one of the property managers is here, am I? And I don't know if, I don't know if you want any comments from that person.
I saw a comment card come forward, but it's not on this issue. Okay. I see a comment card that is on this issue. Thank you. All right, Cody?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I wasn't sure if there was going to be a discussion on this or not, but I appreciate your time. Yeah, I just wanted to thank you all for considering this item, just to address any questions. This is our only access. We bought the properties, it was private property before the city bought the property. I think that was the main question and concern. If there's any other questions, be happy to address those. Yet we understand this is a complex issue. There are multiple stakeholders here. We've worked in collaboration with the city with Open Space, with the city staff and Open Space to try to reach the best compromise possible in terms of preserving our rights as property owners, but, you know, meeting the needs of the other stakeholders that have a vested interest in the open space. And I think we're prepared to meet the terms and conditions that we've, that we've worked with, with those different individuals with, so.
Councilmember Matthews, and then Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. Cody, how soon are you planning on developing this property, or is this all contingent upon...
I mean, this process has been taking much longer than we anticipated when we originally purchased the lands. We're, you know, as soon as we can, but we're also, we also appreciate that we need to go through the appropriate channels. So I think once city council provides a recommendation to parks, we need to finalize our plans for state parks, and then I believe they have 60 days to comment on it, and then I think it comes back to city council, and then we can proceed after we get a final decision.
And this one's for Kevin. Come up for a minute. So we purchased the land for conservation after the private landowners purchased their property, correct?
Not necessarily after they purchased it, after the easement was granted to prior owners.
I was just trying to clarify in my mind, like, when we're buying this property and we know there's some private property owners...
Yes.
...why this wasn't worked out back then?
Yeah, we, when we purchased the property, we purchased it knowing those, these private parcels were back there, as well as the easement was in place. And so the easement was always known and understood that they had a right-of-way easement back to those parcels, so we were always aware of it. This process was triggered by really our fire code and that road needing to be improved in order for the private property owners to build back there. And so that, now we're in that process, or in this process because of that.
Okay, so we knew the easement was there, they had access to it, but after all that, we found out that we had to have road improvements for fire... we found out that we had to have road improvements for fire department to come respond?
I, I don't think we found out after that. I think we always knew that that road would have to be improved to some different level for fire access.
So we, we were prepared for that?
I, I hope so. I think we should, we should have known that. I, I wasn't involved in the purchase necessarily, but I know it was pretty clear that that easement was, was, we were well aware of the easement when we purchased the property.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember House, then Vice Mayor.
I actually had a question as part of Cody's public comment, so if you don't mind coming back up. I think your timer was still on. So I just want to be clear. Are you and the private owners now aligned with, I, I feel like there was conversation before about some of the challenging elements of what was being proposed as, as conditions from the Open Space Commission. Are you now in alignment, if we move forward with recommending the easement with those conditions, that now works for the private property owners?
That is correct, Councilmember House. Yep, we, we read the conditions with the other landowners and with Kevin, and I believe that in collaboration with their assistance, we can meet all the terms outlined.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
My question is very similar, but maybe it is worth asking, because I think it might have a slightly different angle to it. I am leaning towards recommending the easement with the conditions provided by the Open Spaces Commission, so long as those recommendations are sufficient for the needs of the property owners today. So can you speak just a little bit more to that? Maybe, maybe that's the exact same question that Councilmember House asked. Maybe someone from our team can answer the sufficiency bar there. You know, just to give my little bit of commentary here, I remember very clearly this conversation several months ago. I remember feeling the difficulty of it. We have an obligation as stewards of, of our, of our taxpayer-purchased land to follow through on those obligations and the spirit in which that land was purchased. I also think it just practically makes sense and is fair that the, the private property owners of that parcel next to it have some sort of access. The question for me is whether or not, you know, getting your foot in the door leads to a, a road that allows for lots of development in the future. It's a slippery slope argument. But I, I do think that if, if, if the Open Space Commission's recommendations are sufficient to what you guys need today, I can support moving forward on this. And I don't know if we need additional assurances that, that that road won't become a conduit for a lot more development in the area. I'm not sure that's something that we can guarantee one way or the other, no matter how hard we try. So maybe I'm just speaking my mind there. But that's kind of where I'm at. And Cody, please, go ahead, address that question, and then maybe, maybe, Robert, you, you can address the other part of it.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Aslan. It's my understanding that we can meet their conditions, and they will be sufficient to give us access to build homes on our, on our property. It's also my understanding that the road that we have drafted, or the plans that we've drafted, that were, that were seeking to get approved, can only service a limited number of homes. That's more than the number of lots there. My understanding is they can service 30, 30 units. And I'm sure the planners can clarify the exact details. But in order to do a development or any kind of further kind of development of the area or have this access, any other properties, they would need second, we would, yeah, they would need secondary access, and also a wider road that wouldn't fit within the, the modified right-of-way that we're proposing, or within the existing right-of-way for that matter. But Kevin can address that.
Yeah, and I'll try not to get into a ton of detail here, but Cody touched on it. Essentially, the requirements, if there was much more develop up there, development up there, would require like a subdivision process and improvements related to that. There's also no water, there's no sewer, there's, there's limitations like that. We discussed in a little more detail in the last meeting that really limit what can be done up there right now. So I think, Cody threw out the number 30. We've been hesitant to throw out a number. It's, it's something around there, lower would be the maximum. But I think we really need to see the, the proposals come through. But there's definitely some guardrails on this because of those other factors.
And that's, that's satisfactory to me. I think, just practically speaking, it would require another council to take a hard look at this for any further improvements to be made, for my worst-case scenario to be able to come to light. And that future council's decision is nothing that I can concern myself with practically. So at, at some point, I would be willing to make a motion about option number two there.
Councilmember Harris?
Vice Mayor, would you, would your motion include the last part of your sentence, which I think you said, Open Space Commission, as long as it meets the needs, something like that, you said?
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I'm thinking. I'm not sure we need that language in there, because those, those stipulations have been satisfied. I think it's inherent.
Yeah, and I'll just add too, that, again, the process here, this is the recommendation to move it forward to state parks. They do what they do, it comes back. That's when we'll actually have a, a formal easement in front of you with those conditions. So any, even the Open Space Commission conditions up there that you're referencing, they're not final. They can always, when we come back, you'll see them on paper. If you have different thoughts, you're welcome. We can discuss them in more detail then.
So does this action require a motion and a second, or is it just a nod of heads thing?
We, we tried to, we, we went back and forth with state parks to try to figure out what they needed. They just, I think in the language you have in the agenda is what they said, just council needed to indicate that they were willing to consider amending the easement, and that was what state parks was looking for. So, yeah, I think, do head nods work after that discussion? Yeah, I'm looking at Robert, because he was having a discussion with state parks. I think head nods saying, yeah, we, direction, we, we're comfortable moving this forward is what we need.
Is there anyone who does not agree with moving it forward?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Consideration and adoption of resolution number 2024-35. This is item 10C on the agenda.
We're on the waiver, we're on the binding waiver of enforcement, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure I'm up here for the right reason. All right, Kevin Fensel, deputy city attorney. We're here to talk about a Prop 207 claim the city received and a proposed binding waiver of enforcement for council's consideration tonight. So in March of 2022, council adopted amendments, they adopted ordinance 2022-04, which were amendments to the Flagstaff zoning code, in particular to the residential building incentive in our code, including a requirement that all electric development is required to get that incentive, and requiring approval from the Sustainability Director for Waste Reduction and Management Plans. In the summer of 2024, this past June, we received a Prop 207 claim on behalf of one parcel of land. The owner of that parcel claims that as a result of that 2022 code amendment, its property lost 8.55 million in value. So a little overview of Prop 207, this is an ARS 12-1134. It provides that if the existing rights, I'm not going to read that. It basically just says that if you own a parcel of land and a land use law is adopted and it devalues your property, you can file a claim for that devaluation. That's, and that's what we're dealing with today. And then we have 90 days to either pay the demand, amend the law, or permanently waive the enforcement of the new law on that parcel. So if we don't act, if we don't take one of those actions, they may file a claim and seek their compensation. I have on the screen there how just compensation and fair market value is defined in ARS. So what you have in your packet today is a binding, oh, that's a typo, a binding waiver of enforcement, that would not necessarily waive the amendment, but it, they found sort of a, I could try not to use the word middle ground, a little bit of a different approach. So they're willing to do some of the things in the new incentive policy, but mostly what's in the old incentive policy. And that, so that's in the binding waiver of enforcement attached to your agenda packet. So for council consideration tonight is just whether or not to approve that binding waiver of enforcement. If you have any questions?
Council, any questions? Comments?
Comment?
Comment?
Yeah, I'll keep this brief. I'm not inclined to provide this waiver. I'm not sure where the rest of council will stand on this, but I'm comfortable letting the legal process play out. I'm not convinced that the owner's claim has merit, and I don't, I don't like the precedent that it sets in the first place. So that's sort of where I'm standing with it.
Thoughts, questions, comments, council? Councilmember McCarthy, are you moving closer to your microphone?
No, I was just sitting up straight.
You don't have anything to say?
Well, I sympathize with the Vice Mayor's sentiment, and I spent some time kind of leaning that way myself. But I think I am inclined to approve this resolution.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. I am actually in agreement with both the Vice Mayor and Councilmember McCarthy. I don't see that this is really a violation. I'm not an attorney. But at the same token, this is about housing and density, and so just for the spirit of approving this, so we can move forward on that development and get us, without having to jump through more hoops and going through a different avenue, I'm inclined to approve this waiver so we can have the additional housing.
Councilmember Harris?
I too am in agreement of moving forward. And I think it's important to note that, you know, we need to look at fighting this in court. What is that going to cost us in money and time? And are people going to be without homes that they potentially could be in if we let this go? So it might not be the best decision or the best outcome for us or for some of us, but I think it gets us to closer to where we might want to be, so.
All right. So do you want to make a motion?
Well, no, that's fine. I, we'll just make one more comment. I'm, I, I remain comfortable with my position. I think the group wisdom here will probably play out, but it doesn't deserve a unanimous vote. The other thing I would just caution council with, and I would caution anybody about this, it's, it's, from my perspective, it's dangerous to telegraph our intentions to just keep redrawing the line in the sand on, on the, on the basis of we need more housing. I, I, I get what you're saying, and I understand where those values come from, and I don't disagree with them. But just in terms of the kind of future precedent this can set, we need to be aware that we could start being walked over in terms of a, a lot of different avenues on this. I, I don't even want to speculate on what those might be. They're, they're innumerable. So, you know, just make, make sure that we, we know where we stand, and we want to see more housing. We need 8,000 more units in this town. But we need to be careful with, with how we let developers know our thinking on this in terms of what we're willing to give up in order to get that housing. It's just a, just a general thought and not meant to be a, a specific criticism.
Councilmember Matthews, and then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for those comments, Vice Mayor. I agree to that part. How I understand this, and I, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the incentives changed after 2022, correct?
Yeah, in March 2022, we amended the incentive policy.
And prior to the change, they would have met the incentive requirements, correct?
Their intention would have been to meet the, I don't know where they're at in the process right now, but yes, they, they would like to use the old incentive policy before it was changed. And that's essentially what their Prop 207 claim asked for.
And I'm assuming that this project has been in the works, conceptually at least, prior to 2022, when we changed the incentives?
Yeah, Canyon Del Rio, I can't remember when we adopted the, the most current DA, but the development itself goes back 20-plus years, I think, the, the initial planning. But the northern part of that development is currently under construction. This parcel is in the southern or phase two of the development.
So, and I just wanted to make sure I was correct in, in my assumptions. And so I agree with Vice Mayor. We don't want to set a precedent that, you know, for future developers to just, you know, push back a little bit and then we bend the rules. But in this case, and I don't believe they have a case for Prop 207, but I, I do see the merit in this because we did change the incentive after they had started the development plans and stuff. And because we need housing, that's why I'm supporting it, for all those reasons.
Councilmember Harris? All right, I'm ready for a motion.
Mayor, I will move to read resolution number 2024-35 by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Yep.
City clerk?
Resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving binding waivers of enforcement for one parcel of land within the corporate limits of the City of Flagstaff.
And a motion to adopt?
I'll move to adopt resolution number 2024-35.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Thank you very much. So we're moving down to open call to the public, our second open call. And I have OJ? Or DJ? Mayor, it looks like they may have left. All right. Stacy, he's coming.
I understand. It was called OJ there. I don't think that's very funny. But I'm glad to be here. I appreciate being able to be seen today. And I have three minutes. I'm here to, to first of all, to thank the City of Flagstaff, and that might be kind of strange in my situation, but to thank this city, because this city does things that, that makes sense, okay? One of them is the law library, the access to the law library. I've learned how to plead a document in Flagstaff, Arizona, which means I've learned how to, how to plead correctly, as far as I know. Learned a lot about civil procedure and federal rules of civil procedure. The second thing I want to speak about, because I don't think I have much time, is today, I don't think it makes much sense to have an argument that doesn't make sense. And I've learned that basically because this, this place is something I didn't understand. And furthermore, it's really difficult to, to go anywhere without being on camera today, I've realized, especially there are satellite systems that are owned by, you can't, you can't drive home today without having your picture taken from somebody's satellite. So it's, it's completely just changed everything. It's just, it's a different ballgame, I understand that. Third thing I wanted to talk about is, I'm a litigant, active litigant in the City of Flagstaff. I have a, I have a discrimination complaint in housing. I'm somebody that has a disability, homelessness of 15 years. I'm also somebody that alleges being tortured. Torture is something that destroys a person's personality. It's something that goes completely opposite to a person's personality. It causes- It causes hysterical, and, but it, I do write about torture. It's something that, what I call sadists, they're called insidious sadists, sadists, so people that torture derive benefit from torturing people. I'm somebody that has been a victim of this, and I do write about it. Unfortunately, the victim binds with the torturer, and then there's an argument about who was first. So I, I understand, people understand that there's an argument about who was first. Well, it also goes into the torture category, because the, the torturer, when they torture the victim, and I'm, I'm the victim of this, it begins, they have to get to the genesis. The, the torturer has to, has to argue that they are the victim. It's, it's confusing, it's difficult to understand. You could read my book when it comes out, it's called Treacherous Terrain. Regardless, I just, I just wanted to plead to city councils today, I, I wanted to say that I don't think it makes sense for me to be another day homeless. For one, because I plead correctly today, I argue correctly today, which means I don't argue incorrectly. I mean it. There's a lot of people out there that argue incorrectly. Talk to the police back here, they, they, they take care of that problem all day. And thank you for your service.
All right, item 12, informational items, too, from mayor, council, and staff, and future agenda item requests. Councilmember Matthews.
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Nothing.
Vice Mayor.
Just wanted to announce I'll be remote next week. Next Tuesday, I will be starting the 2024 State of the Verdi Watershed Conference, which is happening down in Camp Verdi. Well, it's, it's happening at Cliff Castle Casino, but it's going to be three wonderful days of people from all over the region getting together to talk about strengthening watershed, watershed partnerships. I'm looking forward to it. I'm a scholarship recipient, so that's how I'm attending it, and I will do my best to attend to the council meeting, although I will already be down there. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Sweet.
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember House.
Just sharing with council that today was the meeting of the, or the monthly meeting for the Arizona Commission of African-American Affairs. We had our elections today, and I was elected as secretary, so, yeah.
I have just a couple of quick things, reminding everyone that today is National Registered Vote Day, and the deadline to register to vote is October 7th, so that is coming up. You can go to vote.gov, or you can look locally for the Coconino County Elections Office. And I was excited to announce our grant from the Environmental Protection Agency of a million dollars, coming from the Inflation Reduction Act, for three resilience hubs in Flagstaff, and we made this announcement at the Murdoch Center, and it's, I'm, I'm excited to get future updates on what's being done, but things are, things are already in the works, working on these resilience hubs. So congratulations to the sustainability staff for getting that grant. And that is all I have. City Manager?
Nothing from me, thank you, Mayor.
All right, then we are adjourned.